They opened this for daytime public access due to the fact that there'd be no record of who was coming in and out of that gate. And being that, you know, this is a very unique situation if the public access is going through two pieces of private property to get to management property, which is an unusual situation for district lands. Most district lands, people have private property at the end of their property and they have an easement through their land to get to their land, not the public traversing private lands to get to management. So after numerous discussions with Mr. Larry and the staff at the management district, I and I approached them back in March of this year and offered to purchase the land to the east and west side of our track. And after spending six months with staff, this is kind of what we came up with. As you can see, the management land is everything in green. Mr. Andy's piece is still sitting out there to the left that you've slightly highlighted. Ours is kind of like a blue color. And what we offered, basically what we asked them to do was sell us the fee portion, the fee interest portion of the land while retaining conservation easement. The conservation easement's objective would be to still meet the reasoning why they purchased the land, which was for conservation and to protect water quality in Cedar Key area. So at the time, when we went to talk to the management district, Anne Shortell was the division director. And she advised us that a land exchange would probably be more appropriate due to the fact that the public access easement portion of the deal. So they tasked us to get the staff and we spent numerous months putting together an offer to come back to the district with. And after six months of working with them, this is what we came up with right here, which you can see the parcels we were identifying right here. It's approximately 16 and a half acres. We came back to them to offer them this particular piece, which is a piece down in Cedar Key. It actually has already a kayak access on it that people use, kind of just, I guess, about the round little, I mean, there's no permission or anything by any other. We offered to exchange them this piece, build a kayak access, and build a parking spot at no cost to the district. We would also be willing to reimburse the district for any money that they had spent down there at the end of the road, which at that time, the district informed us, one of the reasons why they put the pad down there on the ground was actually to remedy an erosion scar that was at the end of the road right there. But they also did it to, you know, create, I guess, a policy to launch kayaks. It's a place down there in Little Ditch, and I don't have any pictures of it, but if you ever wanted to come out there and look at it, I'd be one with a couple of baby out there. But if you ever go out there, it's really a tidal influence area, it's a very low spot. It's, you know, if you don't know the area real well, it's easily, easy to get stranded out there, tidal flow around you. There's about that much mud caked on top of that pad, so it's not really a safe spot to like stick your foot out and try to get out of your kayak or your boat or anything, because, I mean, most people that come out there are elderly and it's not really a safe spot. It really should be a concrete spot, in my opinion. And then we were coming back to the district to offer them that particular parcel right there, and then also a money exchange for the fee interest portion of the particular parcels for, you know, for the fee interest portion and they retain the conservation Nothing I'm asking this board today will affect the county in a negative way, and we're not asking to take something away without offering to give something back. In no way will this project hurt the water quality in Cedar Key. And this will not cost the county any money in any way, and in fact, this will put this land back on the tax roll. And nothing I'm asking for today is illegal either. Right here, included in your packets, Forest Statute 373.089 and Section 7, and B and C, this is what gives the district the right to dispose of their lands with retaining conservation easements and/or exchange of lands. So what we are here today is to ask the commission to write a letter back to the district in response to the letter that they sent to you guys, saying that this board, being that this has no effect on this county, has no problem with us trading accesses for the public access portion of this deal and purchasing the fee interest portion with the district retaining a conservation easement. And in conclusion, I would like to say thank you for you guys taking the time to listen to me. We appreciate everything you do, and I apologize for any inconvenience we've caused you guys in this whole deal, so. And I'll also like, Mr. Chairman, if at the end of public comment, if I could get back up and, you know, answer any questions that you might have. Also, Dave Dickens from the management district is here. Almano is here too. No Valentine and Dave Dickens from the management district are here to, if you guys have any questions for them as well. Thank you.
The board having any questions in this company at this time?
I do want to say, we have a question.
No, sir, this is not a question. You don't even have to do that.
All right. So no questions at this time. All right. So we will reopen the public comment and we will start with Ms. Toni Collins.
Where would be the best place to put yourself? Whose bright idea was it to put the phone in with the hamsun and mail it to the other?
Former board members are going now.
What did they do, stay in here overnight?
They approved yours sometime.
Yours. I'm sorry for the people behind, but this is for the board members.
And you all see that?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Toni Collins, and I'm here today to comment on the request from the Swanee River Water Management District for input from Levy County Government. At issue is a request submitted by Christopher and Diana Toppin to swamp or purchase water management district lands adjacent to their property. I would like to offer the following information for you to consider as you prepare your response to the Water Management District. When the Water Management District proposed to purchase the Lukens Track in June of 2011, they retained a Gainesville firm... Sorry. Now, can you hear me?
Things are saying I can hear you.
Oh, okay. My voice usually carries. When the Water Management District proposed to purchase the Lukens Track in June of 2011, they retained a Gainesville firm to conduct an environmental site assessment to identify recognized environmental conditions. That assessment revealed a 2.8 acre cell of buried debris indicating a former landfill located in the northwest quarter, the southwest quarter of Section 16. And you should be able to see that from the area that does not have trees on it. The discovery of the dump convinced the Water Management District to exclude this track from the purchase, dropping the acreage purchased from 662 acres to 642 acres. The excluded parcel was subsequently purchased by the Toppings. That's the one that's in the yard. According to a 1948 government survey map, the dump site was the location of the second Seminole Indian War Port Number Four, which was active from April of 1839 until June of 1841. In 1950, University of Florida archaeologist John Goggan visited the site and found numerous artifacts which he forwarded to a museum in Havana, Cuba. In 1976, Florida State Underwater Archaeologist W.A. Cockrell performed a 16-foot-deep excavation of the site and found numerous pre-Columbian artifacts. At that time, Cockrell reported an Indian midden located on the site, which was 75% intact. Following the excavation, Cockrell noted in his report that the dig site was filled with trash and became a sanitary landfill. Unfortunately, none of the environmental site assessments discovered another landfill in Section 17, which is in red, adjacent to the Toppings property. Referred to as the Old Cedar Key Dump, the site was identified as the Lutterlow Ditch Dump by the Levy County Solid Waste Management Department. The Old Cedar Key Dump property is one of two properties the Toppings proposed to swamp or buy from the Water Management District. As vacant land becomes more scarce in Florida, some builders and property owners are turning to former landfills sitting on prime locations to build homes. Frequently, property owners are not made aware that their home was once a landfill, as being built on a landfill until the bottom falls out. The 20 property owners in one section of Hampshire Home Subdivision of Merrimore and Broward County were proud of the common area behind their homes where their children played and neighbors held cookouts on the weekends. Five years after the completion of the project, those same property owners awoke one morning to find the common area flooded with a vile smelling liquid and various types of waste material, such as wood, buckets, tires, and other construction debris floating in a lake of garbage. The developing company settled with the homeowners for an undisclosed compensation package. In the early 1980s, the Gunn Highway landfill in Tampa, which had been closed since 1962, was subdivided and developed. Thirteen apartment buildings and a clubhouse were constructed over the waste-filled areas of the landfill. Even though efforts were made during construction to prevent methane gas generated by waste from seeping into the structures, problems were discovered in the late 1980s. In addition, differential settlement of waste resulted in cracks in the buildings in spite of an attempt to establish an adequate pile foundation for the structures. The housing went abandoned when numerous investigations at the property showed methane gas migrating into onsite structures and onsite through utility and offsite through utility trenches containing electrical conduits, sanitary sewers, and stormwater pipes. Household waste, debris, and construction materials decompose at different rates and can cause cracks and instability in the ground, allowing methane and other harmful gases to escape. The Toppings have stated that they intend to use the property they purchased for their planning operation. This operation would require daily truck traffic via the public easement, which is not shown as clearly on here as it was on theirs, but the easement would take them from their property out to the Old Cedar Key Road, which would place stress on already unstable services. When dealing with old landfills, government must take into account the health, welfare, and safety of not only the individuals living and working on those sites, but also potential environmental impacts that may result from disturbing old landfills. Our request that the Levy County Board of County Commissioners inform the Swanee River Water Management District that a swap of the parcels to the east and west of the Toppings property should be denied as not being in the best interest of the people of Levy County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Colson?
I was going to go later.
Well, you can go later.
I'm here as Cedar Key Aquaculture Association Project Director, and all I want to do is make sure that you know, because we were asked for a letter also, that we have the letter given to you that we wrote, and we, I think it got to your desk there. Our group met and we just took the Water Management District's own purchase agreement, which they have in May 19, 2011, and it said, "This project regarding surplus, this project configuration has been reviewed from both a water resources perspective and management perspective. The review determined that the entire 662 acres is needed for conservation purposes. No portion of this track is recommended for declaration as surplus." This is the Water Management District's own assessment of the whole package. Our letter just states that we don't want to defer from any of that. We want to maintain it as it is. We had another meeting. No change yet to any of our opinions as of now. We have questions pending from the Water Management District from some of our board members, but upon looking at the laws that Mr. Topping was so kind to provide to, there's some other language in and there that you can read, that the, when you go to, when you want to do surplus or land exchange, and I speak from experience because I was on the governing board 12 years, so I'm very familiar with Swanee River Water Management District. They are supposed to identify the lands through their own staff and then go ahead and bring it to a board, and then the board votes on it whether or not it should be surplus or exchanged. The Toppings were so, were so willing to come to them first and say, "This is what we'd like to do," so that kind of put the horse before the cart, I mean, after the cart. So it wasn't something the district came up with, and they are allowed to look at this and figure out what they want to do. I wish that they would assess the environmental need of this piece as it is right adjacent to the water. We are not concerned as a group, the Aquaculture Association, as to this one property making a change to the water quality. Not the one property, but the fact that other people could come and add to this burden and say, "We want a piece, and we want a piece, and we want a piece." The whole idea of purchase of Lukens Track was to accumulate it in one piece, deal with one owner. Unfortunately, we have three, and that is a problem for management. I also feel that the, and this is personal, this is not from the Aquaculture Association, this is personal, I think there was a ball dropping of how to manage this piece, and I think there was miscommunication amongst the refuge people and the Water Management District on how to really manage it well. And the Toppings had problems, and I recognize those problems, but they could have been ironed out with the district and the lower refuge discussing these problems at a very high level. So the Water Management District asked for these letters. Our position as of now, and you have that letter, is let it be the way it is, and we haven't changed that. You're being requested the same thing. This is a, this is a foot in the door for other situations that you really have to be very careful of with state lands. And I don't think this particular piece has reduced in its environmental impact. In other words, when we bought it, it was identified as a very contiguous piece that was necessary for shellfish waters as a big package, and we haven't changed our minds on that. There's been no change to the natural resource value, and getting a piece in town is not going to mitigate what we need out there. So I just, you know, I just don't see any changes for our organization. And I appreciate you listening to me, and whatever decision you come up with, we've made ours. Thank you.
I don't know if we all got a copy in office. How did you get you?
Is there a problem you think about?
Um... I forgot about listening to this. Yeah. All right. Ms. Campbell, we'll go with the old people who submitted a form. We got a ways to go. Ms. Margaret Hall.
Good morning. I'm Margaret Hall, and I'm homeowner in Levy County, and I simply wanted to state my interest in this issue and the hope that the county commission will not support a change in its current at weekends, because it seems to me that what has happened with the Water Management District deciding has not changed, that the environmental issues have not changed, and that the management issue can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Andrew Goode.
I'm Andrew Goode. I'm the manager of the Lower Swanee and Cedar Keys National Wildlife Refuge, and I also manage five refuges from Crystal River, Jasovitzia, and down to Campabaye. I wanted to articulate the role and the position of the refuge in this issue for the board and also for the community as a whole. When the Water Management District was initially considered buying this property, they had approached us and asked us if we would manage it for them. We already managed a number of properties for the district in the area of the Lower Swanee Refuge and also the Cedar Keys National Wildlife Refuge. And so we said, "Yes, of course we'll manage it," and the conditions that it was purchased for, which was land and water conservation and safe and reasonable public access. As the situation developed, there were quite a bit of community interest in having that access to the Upper Wakasasa Bay, because there's very few, apparently very few kayak launches to that area. And so the kayaking and wildlife community enthusiasts were very anxious on getting that property, maintaining some modicum of access to that property. So we started out in providing access to the property to a limited basis to the public. And when the in-holding was purchased...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
All right. When you just said you were advertising it to the public, or you were issuing permits to the public, where did you advertise that at?
It was limited. We did not have, because the property was gated, had always been gated, we did not have the staff capacity at the time to constantly manage it, because it tended to be, it could have turned into a high-use area. What we did was, we kind of like above a deal, we said, "We give out the number," and at the time, the code of the combination was 1001. And so whoever called us up, wanted access, we would provide them with the code. So we didn't exactly advertise, but the kayak...
It was word of mouth then.
It was word of mouth, and people who had interest in accessing the property, knew it was a public property, would either congo through the Water Management District. So that's how we had been managing the property up until the time that the district took the lead on it, and we'll get there in a second. So when the in-holding was purchased, we had actually been originally looking into it ourselves and added a district and did their environmental assessment. When we saw the district's environmental assessment, we realized that the federal government would never purchase a property with old landfills on it. And so we left it with the Water Management District that this would be an in-holding with access to the public property through an easement. So for a couple of years, we had low, limited kayak wildlife use, wildlife observation use of that property. When the in-holding was purchased, there are some conflicts that arose with the public access and the uses, and we became involved with the landowner on those issues and trying to resolve them. We did it, and then at one point, we approached the district, because those issues were becoming untenable, and because the district is the landowner, we approached the district and seeking a resolution or assistance in resolving those issues. At that point, we let the district lead on those, on that only issue, the public access and use issues, because they are the landowner. And we found it, and we told the district that it was untenable for us to manage a property on their behalf where public, safe and reasonable public access compromised. So our position is that we support, we will manage that property and support safe and reasonable public access, but we leave it to the district, we defer to the district as the landowner to address this issue with the in-holding. If, should the district ask us to become involved again, we gladly will. But at that, at this point, the service has deferred to the district as the landowner in letting them address this issue with the private in-holder. And if I, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
So Rob, now you're all doing any kind of...
Well, we're technically the managed zone, but because this issue has arisen, we defer to the district, because we're not the owner of the property. We manage the property on behalf of the Water Management District. And so typically, the federal government, at least the way we deal with the refuges, we don't step out in front of a state agency and tell them to manage their lands. We defer to that state agency. It's polite and it's a partnership relationship that we have.
Now, were you going, or was... Y'all issuing the permits?
No, we actually never issued...
You're issuing the water management issue.
We never actually issued any permits. The Water Management District was apparently issuing permits to the property through their process. And I think, I think somebody had mentioned earlier, he can ask the Water Management District. I think it was also a phone call. For us, it was simply a phone call and giving out the combination and asking them to lock up the gate and to leave no trace of when they were there. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you, sir.
Now, I have one question. Why wasn't the county ever approached? We have a Parks and Recreation Department.
You have to ask the district that, but we, we were approached by the district to manage that property, just as we do their other properties. So I don't have an answer to that.
And there is a kayak launch at Number Four. We did the grant for it several years ago, Number Four Bridge, where the fishing piers perfectly could kayak in. Sorry.
Is this yours, Tony?
Yes, but you may leave it there. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
That's for whoever's speaking.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to leave it to Mr. Frank. I may not get the last name right.
Commissioner? Thank you for letting me speak here. A little back around on this piece of property. Lukens Track, this beautiful pristine peninsula that reaches out into the wetlands and the Marri area, just north of Number Four Bridge.
Can you pull your...
Same line, you stopped saying it for the... I'm sorry, Frank Overly, I am a resident in Cedar Key. Right now, the Swanee River Water Management District manages this and is managed by the Lower Swanee, not National Wildlife Refuge. It should be and would be enjoyed by more visitors. One reason it is not being enjoyed by visitors is there's no signies identifying the track as a conservation area. What greets the visitor is the large locked gate with a sign posted saying, "Private property, no trespassing." Some people come there, they turn it away, they don't realize that there is an access available to that property. The Swanee River Water Management District is requesting comments from the Levy County Board of Commissioners regarding potential surplus of the 16.5 acres of the Lukens Track. The Swanee River Water Management Board is not asking whether the Levy County Board of Commissioners is in support of the land being sold as surplus, or if you support it being exchanged for other land. We are only requesting your comments on the potential sale. The landowners are asking the commission to support the land exchange process instead of the surplus land process, because the surplus land sale requires that the land be sold in public auction. The landowners are seeking to purchase conservation land on the east and west sides of the property to have the 20 gross acres of upland property required to build a house in this coastal area of Levy County. In a letter dated 12 November 2015, Swanee River Water Management District, the Cedar Key Aquaculture reaffirmed its position supporting the acquisition and management of the Andrews, now the Lukens Track, in Levy County for surface waters and marine protection. Specifically, they support the terms of agreement of the land addition and surplus land analysis in which the entire 662 acres is needed for conservation purposes. Track in Levy County for surface waters and marsh protection. Specifically, they support the terms agreement of the land addition surplus land analysis in which the entire six hundred and sixty-two acres is needed for conservation purposes. It should not be the Levy County Board of County Commissioners, or the Swanee River Water Management District's responsibility to help private landowners obtain twenty acres of upland property required to build a house in this area of Levy County. The two lands are being considered for surplus and movement conservation issue, remain as is. Conservation land with public access and public use properly supervised and managed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Mandy Overly.
Hi, my name is Mandy Overly and I live in Cedar Key as well. I've been owning property there for four years. Um, just one or two things. I've written you a couple of letters, but what I'd like to say is that nothing has changed since this land was initially bought and set aside for conservation purposes. The ecology hasn't changed, nothing's changed except one family wishes to deny public access to land and purchase part of it. That's the difference. And, and there are many people on record that have said, we can't, this isn't the right way to build. The first thing is, it's bought with public dollars and public money. The second thing is, the Aquaculture Association has clearly said, ecologically, we believe this is really important to our livelihood, that it remains the same. And then at the Swanee River Management District meeting in Cedar Key on November 12th and 13th, some fifty, sixty, seventy people stood up and said, golly Moses, nothing has changed. We really want this property to remain as is. It is in the public interest as is. It is not in the public interest. It's in the public interest of one family if it's changed. So please, think about leaving it exactly the way it is and having and not supporting this letter or this request by the public. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Jay Bushnell.
My name is Jay Bushnell. I live in Coward Club. Um, my wife lives in Cedar Key most of the time, she's very active. Um, I've been trying to sort my head out on this whole issue. My first exposure to the land was when we did pepper busting in the friend group along with the refuge at a grant, and that was my first exposure down there. And all I could think of is what a beautiful piece of land that should be accessible to the public. Um, I don't know the particulars of some of this. I'm learning some tonight or this morning. But I would not think it would be in the best interest of the county or Cedar Key to somehow lose this access to the public. It's just a magnificent piece of property. If you've been down there, you know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Ms. Tree, Jerry Tree, all right. Whoa, can you just... Is it cool?
I'm so happy to be here.
Not just y'all, heated, and y'all be arguing, you know?
And it's like freezing out.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Tree and my husband Bob and I have been residents of Cedar Key for fifteen years now, and we always enjoyed the water. We've been out on it for, since we've been here. Uh, I'd just like to say that the county commissioners have only been asked by the Swanee River Water Management District to comment on this sensitive conservation land, not to offer support of a land swap. And this is public land purchased with public dollars for use by the public, and we feel that it should remain that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Tree? If y'all have any questions, just pipe up. I'm about to have, we'll save me and ask you them. Uh, Mr. Steve Stackhouse.
Hi, I'm Steve Stackhouse, a resident of Cedar Key. Um, keep it short and sweet. I basically am here to reiterate what others have told you. Um, I think my number one concern with the issue at hand is losing public access to a beautiful piece of property. The toppings have made it quite clear that if they are able to purchase the lands, that they have asked to purchase or to swap, that one of the conditions will be to remove the public access through their piece of private property. They, when they purchased this property, they knew the public access was there. And that's my biggest concern, is losing public access. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Lieber.
Thank you. All yield. All, all, all yield, I have it. Thank you.
All right, um, we are going to allow commissioners to make some statements. Oh, Brad's here. Good morning, Brad. Anyone?
Good morning, Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Brad Parker. I live in Williston. I'm in the tourism industry, have been for thirteen-plus years here in Levy County. I utilize the Lucas Track or have in the past. Since this issue has come to light, I've refrained from using that property based on the stories I've been told by fellow Cedar Key residents. As to Ms. Collins' comment about landfills, my house is built on what appears to be an old dump site itself. Um, you've received a letter in your package, apparently from a local Cedar Key captain claiming that large reptiles and airboats are danger to anybody using that so-called kayak launch out there. And I would propose that anybody using the Number Four Bridge or any ramp, the Wackasassa Bay ramp, is going to be exposed to those various two issues. So I hope we're not looking to close those just because of some perceived issues with large reptiles and airboats. Uh, the map of the swapped land, we can't tell where it's at based on the photograph that was shown. Some that may live next door, neighbors know where it's at exactly, but until we can see some landmarks, especially from the audience, it gives us no reference to determine if that's even a valid land swap. And I'd like also reiterate the purpose of the acquisition for, you know, preventing or protecting water quality issues, and also this sets a bad precedent. I sit on a state committee looking at public access for the paddle sports right now. I will not name it due to perhaps sunshine law issues, but access is going to be on our next agenda item list. We are losing access statewide, and whether it's from private parcels being sold and resold, or traditional launch sites being lost, even utilizing shell mound, we've been restricted greatly by using that as we have in the past, and I have a special use permit there. Um, so I would urge you to look at this, of course, take it in the best interest of the whole citizenry, not just Levy County, but statewide, because Cedar Key is well-known as a tourist destination, not just for paddlers, but bird watchers, which that piece of property is very valuable. And if there's some way to mitigate out to another parcel of the out parcel owners, that, to my knowledge, has not been looked at. And I would also echo the same concerns of turning it into a commercial zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Ms. Lily, yeah?
What?
Ms. Noah Valentine, Valentine?
Yeah.
And Dave Dickens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name's Noah Valentine. The pleasure of serving as the deputy director of the Swanee River Water Management District for just about the last month or so. Um, and so during that time, one thing I've realized is, you know, passion for the area's ability to use the resources that makes this area special. Um, and so I wanted to mention two things. One was our, I believe our intent as the district was to be a good partner with county and municipalities to make sure if we're changing public access to property, or there's a potential change to public access, or increasing use of public access, or a change in ability to hunt property, or something like that, to get impact your area's economy or your citizens' use of property within your county, that we want to make sure you have an opportunity to comment on that. Um, I think we obviously need to do a better job about finding a way to make sure we're engaging early and often with our partners, to give you a productive way to do that. Um, and certainly that will be something I will like to work on, to make sure we can be, again, meet that core goal, to be a good partner, to make sure that, one, you know, we're holding lands that we need to hold, protecting the environment, not holding lands that we don't need to hold and taking them off your tax rolls. Um, and three, that we're managing in a way that they are showing a return on investment, not just for the environment, but also for your community and economy. Um, you know, we want the land we hold to be a benefit in every way possible. And we'll make sure that they're meeting our water quality goals, natural resource goals, but we want to make sure we're not stopping there, that if we've got recreational opportunities and there are opportunities where we can bring more folks to the community and impact our economy, that we're doing that. Um, look forward to, in the future, working to make sure we've got a process set up so that early on and often we can engage with you on future properties. For this, the intent of the letter again was to make you aware that there was a potential surplus that would impact public access. The issue or item discussed before the board was to surplus our fee simple holdings. So basically to say we're going to change our ownership in that peninsula that you saw from fee simple, meaning we own every property right in this surrounding parcel, to holding a conservation easement over it to manage the natural resource and impact the water quality, but that would change, again, the public access. So.
Would that allow for development? Would that, you know, is that in any way impact capacity of the property owners to build or develop that property, or is that still lock them out from building any house or a barn or anything like?
Mr. Chairman, the... What has been discussed before the board would not allow a change in use for that property. And to answer your question very carefully, I want to back up and just sort of say where we are. And this, again, gets up, we'd like to work at, or I would like to work at, finding a way to make sure this process is engaging our partners early. So we have really just, we're mainly a board oriented process, but we do have two subcommittees, one of which is a committee that looks at land acquisition and land surplus. Um, that committee looked at, I believe as the toppings mentioned, looked at how to handle this, this property, made a recommendation to the board for them to look at. That recommendation was pending public comment about the change in access, that they would recommend having a conservation, you know, surplusing and retaining conservation easement that maintained the current, the current nature of the property. So it didn't allow construction of facilities, had the land managed in the same manner, had the same protection for water, water quality and natural resources. Of course, that, because of where we are, I don't have a conservation, proposed conservation easement to show you to say, here are the exact words. But that was the recommendation to the board. The board then said, we would like to have more due diligence in hearing about the change in public access and send it back to the committee, and that's where we were. And in the board's direction, we would like to hear from, make, or make sure the county has the opportunity to comment on any change in public access also. Very long-winded answer to a short question. I just wanted to make sure you got the context of it.
Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Valentine? Yes, thank you, Ms. Coulson.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
You're always allowed to ask a question.
With conservation easements, can, when you have a conservation easement, petition to lessen some of the criteria at a later date?
The restrictions. Can they, if, if, if they, if somebody had a conservation easement, can, I guess, first of all, can they petition to have the restrictions lessed?
Mr. Chairman, the answer is, I would, I won't use the term petition, but I would say that a conservation easement is essentially, it's a property right. Unlike any property right, the owner of that property right has ability to, has the ability to negotiate the change in terms. Um, and so just, just as if we acquire fee simple property, we can at a future date, and this is by we, I mean, the board, the owner, has the ability to change their interest in that property. So the answer is yes, you could change, like any other form of property ownership.
Ms. Coulson? Um, when I understand that this came back to get this opinion, when I read the statute to do surplus and surplus and exchange in the same criteria, it said that you had to have, what was it, thirty percent of the board then vote for this to happen? It's in the statute. I don't know, thirty or forty percent. Did that occur? No vote has been taken.
Mr. Chairman?
I just don't want to speak without your permission.
You can speak. This is American, man.
Does the city council, do we get to speak there for the votes?
Um, just out of respect. So...
Yes, thank you.
The short answer is, I'd have to double check statute to see. I wasn't aware of a statutory requirement on the board, but more importantly, this issue is not at the point where there would be a board vote on it.
Or the need of the board.
For, for the easement or surplus or any other portion of it. Essentially, it is in a subcommittee of the board and doing due diligence to look at, obviously, a lot of interest in how that property is managed.
Forgive me if I'm wrong, but did you say you're new?
Um, I'm, was, I had the pleasure of coming on board in the middle of October.
So this is your first grant.
This is your first grant. Unfortunately, you can remember this. But do you know how or the process that water management went through to give people permission to use the Lucas Track kayak launch? I keep hearing that there was only three permits issued. Who issued the three permits?
Mr. Chairman?
I got one. Matt here said he didn't issue them. Did y'all issue three permits?
I got one.
The district.
So the district, I called, and he got in from the district.
So the district.
Commissioner Meeks, um, and this is something I'm also interested in learning, and we can approve upon. Um, the district has a number of properties that are gated for which you would call the district, and they would issue a special use authorization, would try and make it as simple as possible, and it could be for months, six months, you know, not every entry point. Um, and so that is the process set up currently. I think we can approve on that, but that is the intended process for our properties. That are, you know, some are, we have different management levels for our property, but those that are gated for vehicle traffic, that is the process.
If I had known that, I would have replied.
And Ms. Brooks, I think you bring up a good point, and that is, how are we providing signage for our properties and how are we engaging with the public to make sure if we have a property that can be a benefit to the community, that community's getting to use. So I think that's a good point.
I've been out there on that property a lot over the years. I've taken my kids down there fishing. My mother-in-law went down there, sat on the ground, just had a beautiful day before she passed away. I've been out there. That's where I learned to shoot my gun. Not shooting anything, but whatever it's mine.
This is before the board made this again?
We were still a fort there.
Ms. Lily, please don't criminalize yourself and say you was down there ducking a truck. Ms. Lily, please don't frame yourself and say you was down there ducking a track.
Yeah, what's it done? I would hate to see access to there closed, because I know the pleasure that we get from going down there and spending time together is a thing. I would even like to see the county managing, manage that.
We're happy to work with you, Chair. And Chair, there's one, one last thing I'd be remiss to mention, and that's for, as we are introspective and approve upon our processes, again, to be a good partner, I want to mention, to be clear, the Toppings are here today, this, I think one of the things we can prove upon is to no fault of the Toppings, they're doing everything correctly, and are not, there's no fault, it's the processes we wanted to work. You have someone else's property who's interested in a way that we can still protect water quality and our natural resources, reduce expenses for the district, I just left the question about public access. So I just want to make sure, to, to mention that, that in this process, I think that's something else we can improve upon, we don't want it to be an issue about the property owner, it should really just be a issue about the district and what's the correct way for the district to manage lands. And we will work on the process to make sure, again, that we're not highlighting an individual coming to us, but instead the districts and the district's decision as to how that's to manage lands and be a good partner.
Do I have a question related to that?
Hold on, Ms. Coulson actually had to bring it up first.
I'm sorry, I lied before. To, just for your information, that specific number on the statute that says how to do the, the vote for the surplus land is three seven three point oh eight nine six C, and I have your own claim, but the other thing is, by not having the sixteen acres, or twenty acres, or whatever it is, the eventual piece, how's that really going to reduce your cost of remaining six hundred? It's miniscule, miniscule, and then no one can access to other six hundred, you know, in the scheme of things, sixteen acres to manage, and you're pulling that out of your budget, it's kind of, and we lose public access, just a budget thing.
I'm sorry, who, who had a question over here?
Hi, Donna Gushnell, my question relates to what you just said. What kind of precedent are, is the Swanee Water Management District setting as far as environmentally sensitive lands going to private development? And I ask that question because we live very adjacent to many of this Swanee Water Management lands. Does that mean that our land now, or our neighborhood, is set up for someone to come in and, and it needs a fair surplus so that they can build those environmentally sensitive lands as well, if we begin setting a precedent for this? And you begin to set a precedent?
And Mr. Chair, the answer would be, that is not the intent or purpose of the district's surplus lands program. Again, in this instance, the question wasn't about protecting natural resources of water quality, it was the extended ownership, whether we could accomplish those goals with a conservation easement versus holding fee simple, but then that would impact, again, conservation of our public access. I don't want to take the, the commission's time, and we can answer, you know, I'll briefly mention, our surplus process is to look for, if there were days when the district to purchase either water recharge areas, flood areas, reduce flood risk to communities, items like that, but the seller had a tract of, say, a thousand acres, and wasn't willing to split it up, the district, if they had the money, would, would if the, the, say, eight hundred acres achieved a good purpose for the natural resources, or reduce flood risk for community, would go ahead and purchase that, and then sometimes didn't immediately surplus the uplands or property that they didn't need? And so that's sort of the general intent of the surplus process, is to look at, are we handling lands in a manager that provides our core resources to taxpayers, and also make sure we're doing our fiduciary duty? And, but I can address questions like that personally outside of the commission.
Yes.
After the comments that the new director has said, and made comments about, I would make a motion that we refer back with the letter to the district, and put, and have them address the issues that's here in front of us today, that way they own the land, or land around it, a managed land, let them handle the decision-making as to what goes on with this plan.
All right, well, we have a motion. Go ahead, here's a second.
I kind of agree with you, I don't think we should get in the land parking.
No, no, the issue that's in front of us is simply that Mr. Miss Toppings followed the direction from the Water Management District to, to get something back from this state government. What we have in front of us today with the new director here, I keep hearing and saying that they would love to have the issue back to them so they can make a decision on it, and I'm looking to give it back there to them to let them address the issue that's in front of us today.
And, Mr. Chair, so, just to restate, we want to make sure we're providing an opportunity where we have a change in public access, for the county commission to be aware of that and have any comments should they want. Perfectly, if, perfectly understandable to get questions back from you, or for you to say, hey, we think you have expertise in managing public access and natural resources in this area, we'd like you to take the lead, that's perfectly understandable, too. But again, I just restate, we want to be in a position where if we're making change to public access within a county, and we think it could have an impact on your residents, that we're not doing that without you being aware, and without you being the operative.
All right.
I think the general consensus here is, most people here want public access, and that's what most people are here to say.
Okay, well, we have a motion on, on the floor, I'll get y'all in just a second, but I have a second.
I'll do a stop, like, if you can.
So now we have a motion and a second. And now we will, again, address public comment. Sorry, Ms. Cannon?
Mr. Sherman, would you please tell the audience what is in the letter from Swanee River Water Management District to the county?
I do not have a copy of the letter in front of me to exactly quote it, but whenever I read it, I'm afraid that something-
It should be undermined, that's what I, that was part of my presentation, was get direction on the letter.
That's right, that's right.
But you can read it under record, not through mic.
Right, man. It says, I could really shorten this up and not read it. Potential public surplus of a portion of the Lukens Track near Leaning County Board of County Commissioners. This letter is respectfully requesting comments from the city or county city claiming association regarding the potential change in ownership of a portion of the Lukens Track near the city of Cedar Key. This Swanee River Water Management District, District, has been approached by the owner of an inholding within the Lukens Track about changing the district's ownership from fee simple to a conservation easement. The owner has requested the purchase of approximately sixteen point five acres of district property around their twenty acre out parcel. The district lands committee voted to bring the governing board the idea of changing the district ownership from fee simple to a conservation easement, contingent upon whether or not there is an interest in the property for recreational use. District staff is currently evaluating the action to the surplus property and determining the terms of any potential conservation easement. Due to public comments supporting the retaining of full ownership of the property for recreational and conservational benefits, at the November second, no, to November twelfth, two thousand fifteen, district governing board meeting, the board requested district staff to write letters to the Leaning County Board of County Commissioners, the city of Cedar Key City Council, and the claiming association requesting comments on the potential surplus of the approximate sixteen point five acres of the Lukens Track. These entities are being requested to comment since they were instrumental in the originally supporting the acquisition of the Lukens Track. Comments would be greatly appreciated by January first, two thousand sixteen. Please let me know if you would like district staff to meet with you or provide you with any additional information. If you know of any other interested parties that are also welcome to provide comments. Sincerely, Dave Dickens, Administration and Operations Division, Director, Swanee River Water Management District.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Now, here we go. I would like to commend Mr. Allenstein that, that he intends to give his attention, that the signage of this property, and in Columbia County, we've got plenty of those, for example, that that he listed as Swanee River Water Management property, and what I would also suggest, that that phone number be listed, say, there's a public king, that the public king, or who heard of, Ms. Lily said, whom I fully support with her statement, and I would like to mention that, I would like to see the public access reserved for that track, and I assume that the city of Cedar Key is asking for the same. Now, the water quality part, is that part of land there even suitable for claim farm? They had very great restrictions on water. And how does that part of land, when Cedar Key had the saltwater in Oakland, and when then salt levels rise too high of the plants, can be done with? Mr. Allenstein, tell us something about that.
I don't know, he's a hydrologist.
Unfortunately, I'm going to turn.
So this guy, I mean, he should have waited January fifth, maybe he should have showed up, huh?
I promise you, I'll be here no matter the issue.
Would you like to attack any of that?
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, I think the best thing is, that's really, I mean, I think as far as areas suitable for claiming and not claiming, what's required there is falls under the purview of the Department of Ag Culture and Consumer Services. Not me, I can get you in touch with the right person for sort of-